I'd like to call this meeting to order, our regular meeting for the month of June 2018. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Independence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item this evening is the recommendation to approve the agenda. We do have an addenda adding a few more people to the extensive ECA we have this evening, so I would ask for your approval with the addenda. I have a motion, Jerry, you want to take the second?
Sure.
I have a motion of second to approve the addenda, the agenda with the addenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, motion carries. This brings us to our first comments from citizens period. If anybody in the audience would like to address the board on an agenda topic or agenda item this evening, now would be your chance to do so. If you're interested in addressing the board, please stand, state your name to the record. Hearing no comments, we'll close comments from citizens and move on to consideration of the minutes of the canceled executive session meeting on May the fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, the regular session, school board meeting, held on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, and the canceled executive session meeting that was not held on June the eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Twenty-three of us can make that motion.
Yeah, exactly.
Won't carry.
I have moved the approval.
Second. I think there's some updates to the...
Minutes.
To the minutes?
We have some titles in the...
Yeah, it said Larry and Kelly voted against the lawn care contract. It was actually myself.
Bruce and Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thought there was one more.
Will amend that. I assume you're okay with that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Clear. I have a motion of second to approve the minutes as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to claims.
I'd move approval of claims four zero eight six four through four one zero one.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve claims four zero eight six four through four one zero one four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, motion carries. So, we're going to move on to tonight's personnel report. It is several pages in length, and I've already discussed with Mr. Chapman about just not reading off all the names for ECA's. If there's any objection to that, please let me know, otherwise we'll proceed on that basis. It's very glamorous.
Yes. Members of the board, personnel report for June two thousand and eighteen is presented as follows. With regard to resignations, we have four certified staff, Taylor Rorbat, South Main High School Special Education, social studies teacher, her resignation affected the end of the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Elizabeth Ornduff, Central Elementary, basically our elementary general music teacher, her resignation affected the end of the school year. Missy McVeigh, South Main High School Eighth Grade Science Teacher, her resignation affected the end of the school year. And Shelley Gray, our vocational co-op adult basic ed instructor, her resignation affected June fourteenth. Classified staff, we have Christina Lamb, Ernie Kyle, Elementary Health Aid, her resignation affected May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Sierra Patterson, South Main Middle School Instructional Assistant, her resignation affected May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Jack Thompson, South Main High School, eight-hour day custodian his retirement. Please note the effective date is September twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. He wants to get that in there now while he has the chance.
Under big rush.
So that is correct.
Yes, that is correct. We wanted to make sure, he wanted to make sure he has time to enjoy his final hurrah, I guess. And finally, Barb Nelson, Adult Education Instructional Assistant, resignation effective June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We do have some recommendations for you as well. Under certified staff, Morgan Desi, South Main Middle School Eighth Grade Science Teacher, affected the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year. Shannon Sonderman, Central Elementary, Fourth Grade Teacher, effective August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, for the next school year. And Donna Hardesty, WRCPD Adult Ed, Basic Education Instructor, effective June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And Carissa, classified staff, Carissa Cunningham, Central Elementary, five and a half hours per day Special Education Instructional Assistant, effective August sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And as President Ream has mentioned, we have fifty ECA recommendations plus the four on the addendum, so a total of fifty-four recommendations and our resignations under the ECA heading for your approval. If you have any questions to any of those in particular, I would be happy to answer those for you, and we respectfully request your approval of the personnel report this evening.
Surprised me to see McVeigh retired.
Pardon me?
Surprised me to see Missy retired.
Yep, surprised all of us.
Mr. President, I will abstain.
I would entertain a motion of tonight's personnel report.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve tonight's personnel report as presented. We'll have one abstention, Mr. West. Any further discussion?
I just had a question. What is the role of auditory management?
The scheduling and the, we want to make, what we have, it used to be one of the staff members did it, but we have Rob Meyer who's been doing it. He maintains the production booth, maintains the schedule, maintains, makes sure that sound, audio, everything is up to snout, so...
Yes, it's outside scheduling.
Oh, yes.
Like Tricat or...
Everything. If the auditorium's going to be used, Rob's involved in the scheduling and making sure the equipment is ready for them. And he helps train students to use some of that equipment as well.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all members in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, motion passes, six to zero. I'm sorry, five zero. Yeah, one extension. Okay, moving on, for discussion, how do you want to handle these? Are we going to take them in at mass being first reading, or are you talking about each one individually?
Board policies and then their handbooks at mass, and then the technology policies at mass. Do three different ones.
We have several policies and handbooks at first reading, so no action will be taken this evening. We'll take them under advisement and move for adoption in July.
I got a question on one of them. When your high school handbook, you got on there, no rips and tears in the pants above the knees. They are, you know it and I know it, they wear them ripped up above the knees. If you're not going to enforce it, then take it out of the handbook, because I got people saying, why is it in there? Why do some kids get it sent to them, some don't? So either take it out of the handbook or enforce it, one or the other. I mean, there's no use having something in the handbook if you're not enforcing it. And it's not too late now to take it out, if you want to take it out.
Hey, Larry. Larry, we're going to do, we got the board policy updates, and then we get to the handbook. We'll be in the handbook in just a second.
The members of board, the policies for the board policy updates, volume thirty, number two. This is, as Mr. Ream said, a first reading this evening. It's based on current law, the revisions are simply to reflect that. No action again needed this evening, it's just updating those, I believe, about twenty different policies, just to reflect current law, so...
It's all Neola.
It's all on Neola, yes, working through Lewis and Kappas. They're all current and legal.
Will this take us through the latest legislative session?
Yes, yes. We will be up to date as much as possible effective when these revisions are passed. We won't see it unless there's something special coming up. We won't see anything until probably, I would say, November, December, thankfully.
I have a question about seventy-five-ten, use of facilities, which is a revision. Just about it says that the option of prohibiting the possession, possession, use, or distribution of alcoholic beverages.
We have said, our revision is it won't be allowed.
Okay.
Yes, we were...
So there are some schools that allow that? Or you're allowed to allow it?
Not public schools, but we have to have that language in there and make sure that we have put in place the fact that, no, we do not allow it.
So we have to make a statement?
Yes.
Good one, any other questions?
Some, sometimes they are ridiculous in a way, but some lawyer, some lawyer said we have to do it, so...
You want to explain another one?
Sure.
Let's say eighty-three fifteen, information management, the very last one.
Let me get to it here for you. It's, that's one of those technical revisions, I read through these handbooks.
More generally address a litigation hold, which requires to identify and preserve information that has been created and moved...
You know, oh, okay, the revision is litigation hold was not, it was, make sure I say this right, in one form it was in quotes and capital letters, and now this form it's not.
So just in your own words, what does that mean? What is that about?
We, we have, we are obligated to provide certain information during the course of our day-to-day operations, and in the event we get taken to court, there are certain things we can provide, some things we can hold, do too. So the litigation hold aspect allows us to hold on to that, to protect either the school corporation or individuals employed by the school corporation.
Any other questions? Okay, so that's, that's board policy, thirty, number two, and we'll come back to that in July.
Yes.
Now we'll move along with the high school handbook.
High school, middle school, and elementary handbooks are all presented this evening with revisions, either strike-throughs or in red, any changes that have been made from the past school year. We do have administrators in attendance this evening to answer questions if you have specifics regarding those, and we'll bring those back in July for your approval as well.
I have one. I mean, we've discussed it as well, on page fourteen, it would be...
Which one?
E.
I'm sorry, which school?
Oh, high school, I'm sorry, high school.
Okay.
High school. And it's about the doors being locked. It says, as many unneeded outside doors as possible are locked during school day, and I thought we had stated that...
All doors.
All doors would be locked during the school day.
I'm looking, on E?
Yes, E, number, page fourteen.
We'll look at that and bring that back next month.
I can jam. It said in the Ola, you know, the basis of the handbook was based on the Ola when I created it.
Right.
Three, four years ago, so...
And that's why we're going to need the corrections.
Being honest with you, I just just never caught it. You are correct, it shouldn't be changed.
Do you want typos?
Just try not to embarrass me too much.
No, they're obviously typos, they're not.
I'll pick it up.
In your first one on fourteen, on page fourteen, where your revision, just your revision, you simply have the word stored written twice, just striking that. And then on seventeen, you've got the word meets, the phrase meets requirements in that revision, spelled M-E-T apostrophe S, strike E.
I thought you were saying M-E-T-S.
Yeah. M-E-T, I don't think...
On page seventeen?
Yeah, page seventeen, meets requirements. And I have a question on the clarification on electronic devices. Is it where the teachers have the discretion, or is it policy that the PCDs are not to be used during class?
Next year, for the first time in many years, during those seven forty-five minute time blocks, students are not allowed to have their cell phones out here.
Whether their earbuds are in, if it's out of sight, a lot of them say, well, that's out of sight.
Your earbuds are not be plugged in to their...
So the part about the teacher, I think I must have misread that part. It obviously sounded like it was the discretion of the teacher in that class, and I think that's what you were trying to get away from, so... That was fine. And I just found that...
Well, it says use of PCDs except those approved by a teacher. I mean, let's say something weird happens, you know, for example, you know, taking something and iPads broken, or something like the hate claims, disavise, whatever.
To search.
You know, if a situation like that, I guess, then it's pretty appropriate.
I just, to Mark and Rodney, I really appreciate, you made it very easy to review your handbook, putting out in front the dates where the, or the dates, the pages where the revisions were noted, and things in red, so I really appreciate that.
Just glad you were able to find the typos.
It made me look in much easier, yeah.
Belt check won't help. Help for the words in here, they're not there yet.
I really like this one on the ninety-six percent student attendance rate will result in an additional final exemption. That's cool. What is the attendance rate currently, would you say?
It should have been at ninety-four point, I think it was ninety-four point four.
Yeah.
Came under a goal.
Oh, I got one. Why can't they go on college visits in May?
Just because of all the testing and things that are going on, it's so hard to...
Work around that.
Colleges and universities are putting their orientation days earlier in the spring semester, and then waiting until summer to do it to offset that aspect because of concern from the high schools across the state.
On page forty, regards to attendance, it's one of the...
It's on the high school.
Yeah, high school, yeah. One of the changes you noticed had to do with the students on attendance agreements and then perhaps not participating in, could you talk a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Throughout the, my time doing this, attendance for students is quite frustrating for some.
Sure.
They just, they don't, they just don't come. And then a lot of them will play the game where they're just close enough, where they can still be eligible to pass the courses and everything, but, you know, are missing way too many days. We have way too many students who are on attendance contracts. You know, I can think of a handful of students who are AV students who miss, who are on attendance contracts. They're just kind of, they're just kind of playing the game. Compulsory education is a national and state law, and I think we need to come up with ways to enforce it. There is no way that you guys would keep me employed if I missed twenty-five or thirty days in a school year. I just wouldn't have a job. But we do have students who missed twenty-five, thirty days in a school year. And basically what we came up with is if they are on an attendance contract, and in order to qualify to be on the attendance contract, you have to miss ten days in a semester, not including medical, I mean, this is no doctor's notes whatsoever, then you cannot participate in any extracurricular activities, including prom, homecoming, things like that. You know, and talking to the students, some of our staff and myself have talked to them, and we, you know, we throw, especially seniors, you know, what's going to get people in here? And some of them said, yeah, sure, missing homecoming, missing prom, we would have them in school, sure.
I want you to know I agree with it. I mean, I think it's a good change. It'll be interesting to see, you know, because you'll make this part of the attendance contract. This language will be in the contract itself, so I support you all the way on that. I just want to hear you talk about it a little bit, and, you know, if you didn't see the problem severe, you wouldn't have brought this, so I'll blot you on that.
How many gets with that effect from?
How many students would it affect? We had almost eighty students on an attendance contract in the second semester.
Yeah, that's all I had.
And the threshold that go on a contract, how many instances?
Ten, in a semester. That doesn't include doctor's notes. And I've had that question before, I'm having, well, my kid's been sick a lot, that doesn't include any doctor's notes. Basically, you know, when we do it, it's, you'll just subtract the doctor's notes from it.
This is a widespread issue, not just here.
Oh, yeah.
It's widespread, and schools around the state are trying to come up with ways to do it, and, you know, we only have so many things we can throw at the students and the parents to alleviate this issue, and this being probably one that'll probably hit home a little bit more, especially those who want to go to prom, those who want to go to homecoming, those are big things.
At what point, do we still take it to the prosecutor after, or is that not effective?
We're hoping it will be with new change, with the judge coming in, you know, we've got some previous support there with Jill, she's taken over there, but that's another point of frustration as well. I don't think there's been much follow through there, as there needs to be, but there's a lot of major issues out there going on with teenagers and students, that sometimes attendance issues just kind of get pushed to the back burner, you know, it's not as tight a priority. A lot of times when you file to the prosecutor's office, you know, let's say I file in March, if I need you to call.
And you need it immediately.
Yeah. There are some counties in the state that have, on Monday mornings, they have attendance court, and I know that Mrs. West has looked at that, and we'll see what happens.
You have been doing home visits with your SRO, though?
Yeah, occasionally, not as much this year, but just because of various reasons, but yes, we do. We've tried, you know, we've looked at some positive interventions as well, rewards kind of deal, motivate, and to be honest with you, the one thing that I've heard the kids talk about the most in my two years is the final exemption. That really caught their attention, you know, not having to take a test, so that's why we implemented the fourth one, if they reached the ninety-six percent goal, but, you know, we try to do these different things like that. It's just a different handling at the high school level, when it comes to certain types of rewards, if it's not big, it doesn't mean anything to them.
And so what you hope is their peer pressure, because that's the most effective.
Yeah, right.
Are we moving on to the high school?
Yeah, any question on any of the three?
Any of the three.
Middle school, were there changes in the middle school? Could we?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I mean, don't...
Were they not, were they not in it?
How would?
I just put the page numbers out to the side there, page one, you know, attendance.
Oh, you must have missed, sorry. It was, that was in our packet?
This is, these are all the changes, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get that, so I didn't know what changes happened in the middle school. I didn't get highlighted. He's got a form there with all the changes.
You want to just go? We'll go through them real quick, Mike, is it extensive?
Yeah.
Let's do this, let's make a copy, this is on first reading.
Yeah, we'll come back second, next time.
We'll come back.
You know, and I have to say, it might become general practice to do what the high school did, because that made it real easy to do.
They did it too, that's what you did too.
I think the intent was there.
And we just did it, yeah.
Just make it into your bag.
You know, I mean, when you put it in red, did you do that?
I just put it out to the side, on separate sheets there, page one, this is the change. It was at the end, it was at the end of, because I have it at the end here.
See you after.
How about elementary? Any on elementary? Nope. Anybody? Well, if everybody is okay, we'll provide, we'll provide you the middle school.
That, no, I'll send this after the board meeting, we'll be emailing as well with the pages.
Yeah, that's fine.
We just may, we just may need to make sure somebody from the middle school's here next month, in case we have some questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, so we'll close out some first reading for the high school, middle school, and elementary handbooks. And let's move on and discuss student responsible use of technology policy.
Members of the board, these policies have gone under review and are presented to the board this evening. This is first reading, no action will be taken tonight. Jenny Fossey is in attendance tonight to answer any questions you may have over there. It's just, again, trying to maintain and keep current with policies with acceptable technology use and with the iPads. Jenny, anything you want to add?
Apparently, there's no major revisions, other than try to be a bit more concise. There was some kind of regurgitation of the same types of themes that I put together. Changes should be tracked on the documents there for you. I combined the iPad maintenance, iPad care, and iPad policy into one document instead of two. The, on the first page of the iPad policy, we changed the section that talked about students' responsibility as far as if there's damage or loss or stolen, just because of the AGI repair contract that we're going to do, so that kind of changes the, what they're responsible for as far as coverage, so that section was reworded.
I find it very clear, well-written.
Any other questions? All right, all these policies, we'll come back next month for a second reading and adoption.
Jenny, I just have a general question. What causes the, what caused your most heartburn, like the great, the most immediate changes, the most pressing changes in the...
iPad, as far as break...
I mean, was it damage or...
It was damaged this past year, and the device that we had this past year came to be replaced. And as far as iPad collection, every year we reevaluate, how do we collect, chargers are in air, just because they are more of a consumable than they are, for students to keep that lightning cable year in, year out, you don't know, we have it at home, it'll lose its damage, and chargers disappear, and...
Yeah.
The one, the one piece that we typically can get back easily is the break, but not the cable. Kids will go and they'll get it off-brand, and we really don't want those back, especially if it's a student who withdraws. They give us a purple one that they get at the gas station or at CBS, you can't give that to the next student, so it's just that, chargers and cables. So we changed the verbiage on that and said that once we distribute that to the student, it stays with them for the life of the device, but if a student withdraws, we expect that back from the student, and I'm going to keep an inventory sheet this time, because we have students who are so mobile and come and go, if a student doesn't turn it in, and then they come back, they're not going to get one the next year.
Now, how successful have you been in the past?
We haven't had that one main inventory sheet. I will allow the schools to make, to hand out and distribute.
Members of the board, Team Jenny has worked diligently to put together an e-learning day program to begin moving forward toward that goal. Your approval tonight is being requested to submit application to the DOE for three e-learning days during the fall semester of the upcoming school year. If you have any further questions, Jenny and Jenny, Team Jenny is here, are here, whatever. Answer any questions you have at that.
Have most, what do you hear? I mean, have most people who've gotten those days approved, you sent documentation along with your request for the days?
You, the approval process is pretty much, will follow the guidelines that you set forth, and the guidelines, there's a listing of guidelines about students with accommodations, meals, what else is there, Jenny? Yeah, they're, they're very vague. Everything is a local decision. They don't ask for a specific plan from us, it's just you will follow these guidelines, you have to watch videos and answer questions in the application processes. I think more than anything, as long as we adopt it and we agree to it, then we just go through the application process and we approve.
You feel okay about our, the way we're addressing the connectivity issues that you run into with people who don't have it?
I think we're giving them ample time afterwards.
Yeah, I, I, it seemed to me.
Oh, yeah. And then just promoting to parents where they, if they need to have access. I still, I still would like to talk to some organizations, Forage and Valley Gate Care, the library, if they might be interested in doing some activities on those days as well, my students would be asked for.
You, on your pipe chart, or your circle chart, you had like five percent who wouldn't have access, and about eleven something, I think, eighteen percent. That was what it meant, what meaning, they just in and out, or what was the eighteen percent? Moderately successful?
I think we'll try to pull that back up again. We actually continue to get so rich, trickling in. So, our amount increased, but it's, the percentages stayed very consistent. We, we ended up dividing it up to, I have high-speed internet, I have limited internet, I have no internet.
So, what would limited mean? That they still could do it, that it's iffy, or?
It might be, I have limited bandwidth, so I only get so many gigs per month, so they, they don't have that, they may have it on their phone, it may not be high-speed. So, we kind of lumped all of those together, and then we took the none, and we put those. But none was always in single digits at each grade level.
Now, do the students fill out that survey? Do you think it's accurate?
We sent it home, we sent it home with the students on actual, we did paper instead, and I know the elementary had the parents sign, sign in, so.
Now, that's why I wondered here.
But, but this chart, it's just an indication, we, I, take me back to how much of a return we got when you asked.
That's what I was trying to find.
Because it chart.
It was, they got it to like forty percent, I think, is where we ended up. And it started like thirty-four, and then they continued to trickle in, and we continued to update the sheet. And I want to say it was like forty percent. Still trying to find.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And I know you guys will do this just because of the way you are, the two Jennies, but after, after that first one, after the nineteenth, you'll get together and say, okay, what worked and what didn't work, and.
Yeah. And we'll definitely have things that did work, and we'll have to go back and reevaluate.
Maybe even get input from families, maybe?
Definitely.
You know, the, the good part about this is these are the ones you can plan for. It's the, when you start using them for inclement weather days is.
Well, I really think after the first year, we, after we go through, and we analyze and talk about it, do we want to continue to do the schedule? Are there benefits? Did it work well for families? Did it work well for us? Is that something moving forward in the next years that we want to continue, or we're good, we'll, you know, go the other way, that's something we'll have to evaluate next year?
So, the e-learning day that we're, the days that we're practicing, is it going to be like, it's a snow day that we weren't expecting, so that they'll get the stuff that morning, or is it going to be like a snow day where we had, we were kind of expecting it?
The scheduled days are planned, so.
So, they're planned, so.
They all know, and so the day, it'll be a little different than a snow day, because we'll be prepared for it a little bit better. The students and the teachers and the parents can communicate and make sure everybody's ready to go for that day.
And the two is the, the day before, our first one, like September nineteenth, that September eighteenth, Dr. Teachers will go over with their students in class, and just remind her, this is where you need to go, this is what it should look like, to prep them for the next day, that's the first time.
That's what I, my question, this is kind of the trial run, to see how it will work for, it won't be built into our, our calendar every year.
No, these three days? No, this is, these are practices.
These are just practice.
But you have to add these days to our calendar.
They will be a part of the calendar, yes. Teacher, on the practice days.
Teachers come on.
We're going to talk about the calendar next, yes.
Forty-two percent, sorry.
That's pretty good.
In forty-two percent.
Well, I'll, I'll raise the motion.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
And remind, remind all board members, this motion is just to make the application.
Right.
Correct. So, a motion of second to approve the application being sent to the DOE requesting three e-learning days for the 2018-19 school year. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Now, the next item is, assuming we get it approved.
Correct.
Is, we got to make changes to our academic calendar that we've already proposed.
And, members of the board, pending the approval from the DOE, which we fully anticipate, of the e-learning days, we'd like to amend the 2018-19 academic calendar, calendar to reflect those three days, September nineteenth, October twenty-fourth, and November twenty-eighth, as e-learning days on the calendar, and they will count toward the hundred and eighty instructional days and the hundred and eighty-three teacher work days.
Do we, I meant to ask before, but do we believe that we'll go by the time registration happens?
Oh, yes.
I think so, yeah.
It's pretty quick.
I'll get it done as soon as I can.
Okay.
So.
I have a motion and a second to amend the academic calendar for 2018-2019. I'll the preface that the DOE does approve our request to include three e-learning days. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, we talked about handbooks before, now it's time to talk about book rental fees.
Members of the board, approval is requested for middle school and elementary school book rental instructional fees for the 2018-19 school year. You have those in your package this evening, we will have the high school at the next board meeting.
Anything new or unusual with these?
On which one, I'm sorry.
Anything new or unusual with these, with book rental fees for elementary and middle school?
About seventy dollars.
I don't know what they were last year.
It's an increase of forty dollars, since we're going to have iPads for our Asian students.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the 2018-2019 book rental fees for the middle school and the, and the elementaries as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next item, recommendation to approve annual public officials' bonds for all treasures and principals. The effective dates are July one, 2018, through June thirtieth, 2019.
Members of the board, this is an annual request that we go through and have as a matter of official board action. Your approval is requested this evening.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the corporations' participation in the Title One High Ability Program for 2018-2019.
Members of the board, this also is an annual request that we go through in order to get federal funding for these programs in a matter of official board action. Your approval is requested this evening.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the corporations' participation in the Title One program at High Ability for 2018-2019. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next item, recommendation to award South Main Community School Corporations bids for bread, milk, and dairy and commodity pass-throughs for 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Chairman.
Members of the board, bids for bread, milk, dairy, and commodity pass-through were received and opened on May seventeenth. For bread, Aunt Millis was awarded. For milk, the bid went to Prairie Farms, and for the commodities, bid went to B&amp;B Foods. Your approval of the acceptance of the bids is requested this evening.
It's the same as what we always have done.
Pretty much, yeah.
So moved.
Second. I got a motion of second to award the bids for bread, milk, and dairy and commodity pass-throughs for the 2018-2019 school year as recommended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next item is recommendation to approve the corporations' participation in the Title One High Ability Program for 2018-2019.
Members of the board, this also is an annual request that we go through in order to get federal funding for these programs in a matter of official board action. Your approval is requested this evening.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the corporations' participation in the Title One program at High Ability for 2018-2019. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next item, recommendation to award South Main Community School Corporations bids for bread, milk, and dairy and commodity pass-throughs for 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Chairman.
Members of the board, bids for bread, milk, dairy, and commodity pass-through were received and opened on May seventeenth. For bread, Aunt Millis was awarded. For milk, the bid went to Prairie Farms, and for the commodities, bid went to B&amp;B Foods. Your approval of the acceptance of the bids is requested this evening.
It's the same as what we always have done.
Pretty much, yeah.
So moved.
Second. I got a motion of second to award the bids for bread, milk, and dairy and commodity pass-throughs for the 2018-2019 school year as recommended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next item is recommendation to approve the Touchdown Club and Local Veterans Department to erect a Veterans Memorial at the Brad Anderson Memorial Field.
Members of the board, the Touchdown Club has worked on this with the local veterans and will work with the school administration to assure the proper location and specifications are established for this proposal. I, I think it's a wonderful gesture on the part of the Touchdown Club to work with our local veterans to put something in place to honor the men and women who serve our country in the armed forces, and we ask your approval of this project this evening.
Question. Who will, whose responsibility will be to maintain the flags? How much gets to be an issue?
I'll defer to, Mr. Chairman.
To our studio staff, who just take care of our flag up from the building as well.
Who's going to, who's responsible for purchasing the flags?
As far as I know, the way Mrs. Krueger described it to me, the VFW, local VFW here was going to take care of everything, so.
Okay.
Really, really, it was just up to us. She asked for permission to, she said everything else was they would take care of.
I'm glad someone's going to step up and take that responsibility, because so many of these things over time, you know, people pass along and go away, like your tattered, it's not inexpensive to replace flags, so I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing it, and I really totally agree. So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second to approve the request from the Touchdown Club, Department of Local Veterans, to erect a Veterans Memorial at the Brad Anderson Memorial Field. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Moving on to donations, several of them.
Members of the board, your approval of the following donation amounts from various individuals and groups and organizations is requested this evening. At Ernie Powell Elementary, donations totaling $250 came from the PTO Christina Lamb, Rosie Webber, Alicia Roach, and Delta Theta Tau. From Central Elementary, donations totaling $2,125 coming from the Vermont County Education License Plate Fund, Tri-Cappa, Dustin and Sarah Shannon, Darren Tucker and Paula Schof, Brad Ray's and Elm Street Laundry, Delta Theta Tau, the PTO at Central, Walmart, and Clinton Township Trustees. From Van Dyne Elementary School, donations totaling $535 and ninety cents from John Knapp, Tri-Cappa, Delta Theta Town, Park County Community Foundation, and Coca-Cola Gift. South Vermont High School, donations totaling $4,300 from Paul Slapp, Western Indiana Community Foundation, North Vermont Junior/Senior High School, the Commission for a Drug-Free Vermont County, SFW Incorporated, an anonymous donor, Community Recreation Center, and Valley Proconstruction. And finally, South Vermont High School Band, donations of musical instruments valued at approximately $1,600 by a local and very supportive patron. We ask your approval for those donations this evening.
That's interesting, what she did in terms of evaluating the instruments and what kind of repair you had to make to it, that variation.
She's done a good job with that.
I do, I do have one question. We don't talk about these most often, but the Clinton Township Trustee, $1,000 donation.
That was to offset lunch charges, is that correct, Ryan, I believe?
It says textbook rental.
Or textbook rental, that's right, that's right, yeah.
So, so is that to help?
To help.
Parents?
Parents that could help, they couldn't pay for their.
Okay. That's great.
We get those from time to time from various community members to help offset either.
How do we evaluate the need on, on a?
That basically goes to the buildings themselves.
I, I couldn't tell you, Janice probably could give more of a direct amount of how much we don't have collected at the end of the school year, it's probably a pretty steady amount across all levels, but can you give a ballpark?
Well, the trustee asked that any full-paid student that hadn't paid, we paid them off first, and then it goes down to any student that's pre and reduced.
Okay.
So, last year, we were fortunate enough to get fifteen hundred, and so we started at the top of the alphabet, and this year, I started at the bottom, but we were able to help about thirty-nine families this year.
That's great. Thanks, Janice. All right. Any other questions?
I make a motion.
I, I second.
I have a motion of second to approve the donations as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all members in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Donations are approved. Do we, did you mention payment this one?
Yes.
Okay. I got six savings on the textbook rental. So, this brings us far, this concludes our regular portion of tonight's agenda and brings us to our last call for Susan's comment. If anybody in the audience would like to address the board, now will be your last chance to do so. If you're interested in addressing the board, please stay and state your name to the record. John?
So, is this, sorry, is this my time?
It's your time.
You've been waiting all night. John Bairdley.
Thank you. Good evening. I think we know each other, and this is Michael Tinnear. So, this was our first year coaching girls tennis, and we wanted to give you an update on the status of the tennis program, and also propose an idea that we have for a structure for tennis. So, first of all, we finished our season about a month ago. Really good start, good first year for us. We finished second in the WRC. We had one, only one conference loss. The, the winning school, Seager, was undefeated, so we didn't meet our goal there, but we had a good start of the season. We had one all-conference player, Mia Sivindros. But I'm really proud of the kids, I'm proud of how the coaches, how hard we worked, but really what I'm excited about is the buy-in that the kids, the girls have shown. We started the year out in January this year. Michael was able to arrange to have two ports at DePaul. But really, what I'm excited about is the buy-in that the kids, the girls have shown. We started the year out in January this year. Michael was able to arrange to have two courts at DePaul. So they, I don't know, we've been over to their facility, they've got a great indoor facility. The good thing is, it's free. So we had two courts for voluntary practices. So we, it was voluntary, and we brought kids over and had some good workouts before the season started. So that was a good start. And then we've had buy-in this summer. We have kids participating in camps, we have kids taking private lessons, and Michael has some things, and Deb Pykendall is assistant coach. Deb, Deb is not here, but I don't want to neglect mentioning her name. So Deb did a great job this year. But we have some things planned for this summer, too. And then we're excited about our youth program. Some of you have been there, that's at the CRC, and that's March to November, give or take, every other Saturday. And we do that at CRC, so it's inside. I think this past Saturday, we had, we had 36 kids, give or take, we had as many as 80. So with vacations, we'll miss some, but we've, we have some momentum here with the girls tennis program, and we're excited about it. So before I give our proposal for what we would, the structure that I would like, first I want to say how much we appreciate the investment you've made in the courts. They're the best courts around. They're the best courts that we have played on this year. And if you don't know much about tennis, I mean, I think you may drive by and say, oh, we've got new tennis courts, they're nice, but everything about them is top-notch. We've got brand-new fencing, we've got sidewalk around, we're used to, it was mud if you were walking, you know, especially, and sometimes snow this year, but they are slightly crowned as if you're familiar with athletic fields, you know, that's the idea for them, but they are slightly, you can't really, but they dry great. And that wasn't, this year was not only for, for snow, but it was for, I mean, for melting snow, rain, but, you know, kids can't play on wet courts, so they drain really well, the surface is gray, but, so it was a great investment, and we appreciate that. So our proposal is that you finish kind of the project, or what we would term finish the project. If you've been, if you've seen the shelter that's there now, and I would encourage you to stop by and look at that, it's the same shelter that was there when I played tennis, which was about two years ago. So we have, and Michael has a friend who is an architect, was quite enough to draw a proposal. I'm not sure how this is going to happen.
Nice job.
So if I was better, because I have a proposal, but I'm not, so. But it's essentially an open-air structure. So would be, it's a shelter, open-air structure where we would have picnic tables, teams could meet, we could set up a whiteboard to address the team, and we do some whiteboard work, we've mainly done it inside, get the kids out of the sun. A big part of it is, we would like to host tournaments. And if you're hosting tournaments, you know, it's, it's an all-day event, and to get the kids out of the sun, have them a place to eat and gather and put all their, their stuff, it would be a nice thing. This proposed structure has storage at one end, and Michael, you can talk about this if I'm, fill in if I'm missing anything, but the proposed structure would have bathrooms at one end and storage at the other end. So storage would be, it would be balls, hoppers, the storage we have now is, is not great. We have a ball machine that we just carry around with us because we didn't really have that, that we borrowed, but we didn't really have the space to heat that this year. And in the bathrooms, now we are using, assuming we have a key, the gym, which I didn't actually have a key this year, so if I, and I think that was my fault, I may have been able to get one, I'm not sure, but was that my fault? Yes, okay, I think that is. So we, the kids, we need to go to the gas station or to the football field, or, so that's a nice thing. I understand that that is, that's a luxury, but that's something we would like to have. But I think the way we look at it is, we want to be flexible, we want to be creative as far as how we could get this done. I know that you have made a huge commitment to, to the stock facility and the new gym, the auxiliary gym. So, you know, maybe this is a thing that we could do in stages. Maybe we could involve building trades, for example, to do, I think if we look at what are, what we really need would be a shelter with picnic tables and, and storage. And then if at some point we could, we could add the bathrooms or a dressing room or something like that, that would be, we would be thrilled with that, too, but that might be something that we could, we could have at, at the end of the day. But we are, we're really excited about tennis, we are excited what this could help us move it along. We would like to host a sectional, we would like to host the WRC, and we'd like to host tournaments during the year. That could be a, a small source of revenue for the tennis program. I'm, we're not going to make a ton of money, but you can make some, some money on tournaments that you could put back into the tennis program. So, do you have any questions for me or Michael on that?
That's a heck of an architect, isn't he?
And, you know, I think he's, he's hand-drawn this, and I don't think that's-
Beautiful sketch.
Yes, it's, it's really an incredible building.
Yeah.
He really put a lot of time into it, that was more-
Not many people do it that way anymore.
No, that was, but there, there are a lot of questions that I don't know. Cost, I don't really know. Obviously, when you, when you start adding bathrooms, that makes a huge difference in cost, but a, a shelter with storage, I don't think that should be really that expensive, but I don't know. It seems like with school projects, they always cost about four times as much as what you pay for it. So I hate to, I hate to put a number there. There's also the issue of, where do you put it? Well, the natural place to put it would be where the structure is now, it's right by the parking lot, but that is right by the parking lot, and are there issues there? Building a new structure right by the roadway, is that an issue? I don't know, I mean, you may have a better idea than I would there.
Would this be a lot bigger than the existing one? A lot bigger? Yeah.
This room is a lot bigger.
Is this a, are you a civil engineer? What kind of engineer are you, buddy?
Sometimes I say uncivil.
Well, you want, I'm gonna ask you an uncivil question. Is this 20 feet? Is this a, does it look like it's 20 by, 20 or 20 by what? I mean, you've got that markings down at the bottom of the third page.
Michael, do you know?
Or is that just an estimate?
It's, it's an estimate, and, and the proposed building was meant to be about two-thirds the length of our courts. Doesn't have to be that, but that, that was, that was the idea.
So keep in mind that this is our dream, okay?
Yeah.
And this is something for you to consider, to think about, to see how it fits within the overall. I mean, I think South Permian's done a great, this administration and the past administrations have done a great job of maintaining facilities. If you compare it to other schools that are similar age, I mean, our facilities are great. So I, I guess I would like to be creative here, and, and I don't know if that would be a committee where we could talk about it or not, but it's something I would like for you to think about.
You mentioned building trades. Do we have that, do we have that meeting that would do, be, you know, do something like that? I know I've seen some houses.
Through the, through our vocational call-up, we have a building trades program, and we house the Southern group here at South Permian.
Hey, maybe things like that, they could, they're-
You know, I, I think talking to Rod Clark would be our first step to see what level our kids are at, as to what type of work that they would be able to put together, and you want to make sure-
You're going to save money.
Yes.
By us, but the bad thing is, they work very slow because they're, he's only got all the kids together for an hour and a half, you know, each day, four days a week, five days a week. So they do, the process would take a little bit longer than normal, but you're gonna save a lot of money by having them do it, because they just, we purchase the materials-
Pretty simple construction.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple construction, I would think.
It's kind of a win-win situation.
It would be a-
If you've got the time.
It'd be a good test for building trades.
Yeah. So next step is to talk to Rod Clark, and would that be something you do or John should do?
Oh, I think it's something that we would give Mr. Schimmel and Mr. Newby, who is our vocational director, to see how we could go about doing.
And it depends on the jobs that they already have scheduled. I know they're working on a big job in Rockville, I don't know if they've finished that, it may be something they're continuing to work on in the fall, but I'd have to check it out.
How many students do we have typically?
In that program?
Yeah, we have, we have-
Twelve to 15.
We have morning and afternoon session.
No, there's just an afternoon, there's not enough for a two, a whole day. They're trying to get to that point, but they don't have it yet.
So it could be done in stages, some of it could be done by the building trades, and some could be done by a professional? Or once the-
If you're, if you're talking plumbing and all that, yes, the professional would call for that.
Is this some, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, good.
Is this something maybe some of the community organizations, Optimists or some of the others would be interested in, even so the sororities, I mean, maybe do-
It's possible, because the, the tennis courts are used by the community as well.
Right.
Okay, so, that's-
So, you know, we, we, there are several service organizations that have supported our youth tennis program. TriCapita, Optimists, Lions Club, I hate the list, so I'll probably forget several, but I know that those are-
I, I think it's safe to say that every service, active service club in, in the county is supporting youth tennis right now.
The Permian County Chamber of Commerce has helped us. So we, we've had good support for youth tennis, and I think that is something that if we could kind of agree on what's, what's doable, what's, what's reasonable, and then establish a cost, and then we could say, see where we stand, what the school's finances would be, and then if we had to raise the money, that would be.
Well, I think, I think you need to refine, refine the design so we can arrive at those costs, and if we can find an architect that, you know, can nail this down, that is like Jerry's comments, is that, you said it was two-thirds the length of the course, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, oh, the course, that's a pretty long, pretty long building, you know? So I think we need to refine the design, come up with a cost, and I, you know, and I think we can talk about moving forward. I, I think it, you know, it's what the community needs. I agree, the tennis courts are a great investment, the community uses them, I think it's the right way to go, but I think we need to get some, some-
And I get, and I'm happy to do whatever needs to be done there. I think I'm a little, my guess is any construction project that the school is going to, I mean, you're going, you're going to use your general contractor, whatever, so what, how does that even work? Does it have to go through you? Do you have some guidance there?
What we, what we would need to do initially is to take a look at what is, what, what your needs and wants are, and then kind of put together a package, cost it out, see where we're at. There's certain rules we have to follow.
Sure.
Obviously, but if it's something that the building trades can do solely, that's one thing, though as Mark said, with the plumbing and electricity and all that kind of stuff, you know, we're gonna have to put that up a bit.
I would like to go on record, though, Mr. Chad, and say, you know, I appreciate Coach Tadarek, Coach Berdly, and Coach Kikendall, their enthusiasm for the tennis, girls tennis program, they've done a fantastic job this year. I do appreciate their vision for the program and wanting to improve what we're trying to do for South Permian High School. You know, they, they fall right in line with, you know, kind of that vision and goal that I have for all of our programs. The facility we all have out there today, I mean, it is, it's abysmal. I, I went out there and looked at it again today, just trying to think of some ideas of what we could do just to kind of get it in decent order before the boys' tennis season starts for the fall. But, you know, this is something that I would like to see happen as a part of our school and our program as well.
Have you discussed this with the boys' tennis coaches as well?
We, I have not. I have not.
I think something that, if, to me, that needs to be a joint effort, obviously, because both fall and spring will be using the facility, so I think that would be a key.
Well, hearing, hearing Mr. Schimmel's support, I'd say let's put it in Mark's hands to work with-
Sure.
To work with John and team, and bring us back a, bring us back a plan.
Because what, what's-
And we might have to bite the, I'm sorry, we might have to bite the plan off a little chunk of the time, but, you know, certainly.
No noise at all?
I, I think that'd be a, I think it'd be a good, good path forward.
Because what it sounds like to me is that we had this wonderful project to build our wonderful courts, but we didn't finish it, you know, by, by adding the facility, you know, the storage and all that, so it just sounds like it's finishing something that we started, and wondering if we could maybe tuck it into the one that's coming up.
I don't think there's that, could be that much, but, you know, that's something that we, we just have to look at what our options are and dig into that, so.
The timing on this might be great. We talked about rerouting traffic with the auxiliary gym, and if we were to put this facility in, this might be a great time to reroute traffic.
I don't intend to see you folks for another year or something like that. I just want to put my two cents in with, this busy part of the detail, along with the fact that the structure as proposed is a big roof. It, it provides shelter not only for our high school students, but for our youth middle school program that is maturing. We have our first student now in that program who's going to play her first term this, this weekend, and we do from time to time have 90 elementary students who are going to be middle school soon enough that are active in the program. And I think this is a community pride kind of project. For one thing, most of you may not know, if you look at those courts, there are faint green lines in the regulation lines. Those are youth tennis lines. Those are quick start lines. Those are tennis tournament-ready lines if we've got a place where we can get kids out of heavy-duty sun. So we've got, if you, if you drew a line from South Bend to the Ohio River, we have the best courts on the west side of the state. I see them all the time. You know about my involvement in tennis with my daughter. We've got the best facility. We, we finished this, this is an economic development project. I have to hold that. Thanks, Bernard.
I, I think it looks like a, a great project to be done in phases. I mean, because at the minimum, what you'd want is the shade structure and the storage. So, you know, I, I think let Mark work and, and, you know, building trades look at this thing and see what they could do, and, you know, just try to do it in phases.
It's like to see him come back with some kind of loss.
We appreciate it.
You can put back the money. Right on, man. Ross, Mark, if you'd be able to give you a estimate.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens' comments?
Anybody want to follow that?
All right, we'll close citizens' comment period and conclude with first superintendent comment and then board member comment. Mr. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Rem. Unlike last month, members of the board, I'll be very brief. Summer's going by quicker than I can imagine, already almost at the end of June. We've got a lot of work going on at the schools that, as Larry mentioned earlier, we're busting up concrete at the central to put in new sidewalk pieces that have been trip hazards. So a lot of things going on at other schools as well. The middle school gym is being re-sand or to be refinished.
The middle school gym is being rehanded, refinished, among other things. So we've got a lot going on, a lot to do, and not a whole lot of time yet to do it, so. And throw in the factor that recent weather has created havoc for us, especially on this campus, a lot of downed trees. You've probably noticed there's a lot of trees missing all of a sudden. Some of them, just the tops of them are gone. Making through, no major damage to any of our facilities, just a lot of trees being uprooted and so forth. And finally, staffing is, we're getting very close to having our buildings staffed, we still have a couple out there that still need to be filled, but we're working diligently on that. Hopefully get a little bit of time off this summer. We'll see.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chavon, Dr. Hawkins?
Oh, I just want to thank all the staff and principals and everyone for, that's a pretty heavy personnel report here and a lot of work to go behind that, so I really appreciate all of it. Thanks to Michael and John for your presentation and your appearance here, we always appreciate that. And just enjoy what time you have left.
Mr. Lovett?
Well, my, my comments involve two questions. Behavioral interventionist yet?
Had.
No. Okay. And then Ginny, summer reading program.
How, how it's, where is it? Are we done?
Our summer reading camp?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're offering. We've had great, great feedback from parents, kids love it, and kids were like, I wish this could go for days, so, I mean, what kids say that. Personal, I had a group of fifth graders, so this was the first time for me, but we, you know, we took our beach towel and our sunglasses, we went outside to Reese. And it was recess time, and they were like, can we keep reading? We've never heard that before. So it was just a really good time, and we had great, I mean, the teachers were excited about it, they had a great experience, so it was good for them.
Good. How many kids would you say participate?
We had about eighty-six every day, right down there.
Ranging K through five?
K through five, and it incoming.
Incoming K, wow. What, how, what would you say, what, what would you attribute to that success? Just what, what?
Four days of free daycare. But I, I think, you know, the first, the first day that they went.
But the kids' comments mean something else.
Right, I mean, they, we made a really fun forum, and they all went home with a backpack full of books, and it was great.
And you know you were successful because with teaching more reader, with kids, with reading, getting them excited about reading, what would you say?
Yeah, I think that was the whole plan, is just to try to get them, you know, looking forward to it, and then give them materials to be able to read over the summer, to try to avoid some of that summer slide, so we don't come back in August and not have read for two months. So I think we accomplished that, but we had some great books for them, they were really excited about.
It's gonna be interesting then to interview the teachers of these kids, to see if they came in with just a little bit of a oomph.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cool?
I see that the Calaboy signed his letter intent to go to Danville, maybe we'll get a picture in the paper of him. And then Matthew Pangolis maybe reserve, you know, for the all-state baseball team. If one of the kids can't make it, he gets to go, so that's good, and the Danica Boys Center, the football thing, so. I just say for tennis, hang in there, we'll do as much as we can.
Thank you.
But when you're talking about putting bathrooms out there, you're talking about a lot of money because you've got to have all their gas stations. We don't even have bathrooms for the softball and baseball, look how many years they've been there.
Okay, well, give us a little shade then.
Well, a little shade, a little shade's different, this thing here looks like, looks like they designed a house to make it look real fancy, but I mean, you have to go with what we can get.
It's just a big roof. There you go.
We've got the Spanish all worked out?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cool, Mr. Crowe?
Oh, I just want to thank everybody for their hard work, these updates, I know that, that takes a lot of work. And thanks for your presentation. Everybody have a nice rest of the summer.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Summer lunch program, is it still going strong?
Yeah, I keep my questions.
There are a lot of cars down there.
They trickle in there.
Lined up all along there.
Got numbers or?
I can ask Debbie, I'll get some initial.
We'll email them, email them around.
Most of the reading camp kids use the lunch program?
Yeah.
I saw the banner on the, their corner of, not the line, so that's good.
State-wide effort. They've been, they've been promoting it on the radio stations throughout the state as well, and it's a big push.
I know one day this, a, the band on their break, lunch break, came down and entertained the diners.
I happened to be there that day, it was very loud, but it was awesome.
That's nice.
It's all. All right. I think, I think the only thing I really have, I guess, is I thank the community's support for the baseball team. And, and I think, you know, we've got some good kids around here, and they, good parents, and everybody, I think that was the best of a bad situation. And you learn a lot of life lessons when you go through that, and we felt bad for our boys. Hopefully they can come back next year and prove them wrong. That's all I can say, got to say about that. Otherwise, it's a quick summer already, hot weather out there. We've got a lot of activities going on. I see a lot of, a lot of cars, you got football, basketball.
Swimming.
Swimming going on. Tennis.
Dance, everybody, yeah.
It's good to see the, it's good to see the kids active, so. All that and a motion.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Stand adjourned, we do have an executive session immediately called.